I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order. To begin our meetings, what we usually do is we have an open public forum from anybody from the community that would like to speak if you're not on the agenda. And then we limit that to two minutes. So is there anybody here that had something they wanted to say before the meeting? Yeah?
I've got complaints about my water.
Okay.
Six thousand gallons. I have never in the whole time I've lived in the city of Winthrop, which has been the above over forty years, have never had six thousand gallon water.
Okay, is she one of those that have just recently been hooked up?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
On the new meter you're getting six thousand gallons?
That was her final.
That's what they're saying.
On the final.
And they're supposedly they read off the old meter in the basement, and I don't believe that meter has that many digits, but ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-four, whoops, I read that wrong. Nine hundred and ninety-three thousand nine hundred and forty was on that meter down, supposedly on that meter downstairs. I read the meter that was put outside on my house, I don't know how many years ago they put that there, but I read that tonight, and that only said zero seven zero five hundred. And that's using all the numbers that we never used to use.
Okay. And you brought that to the city?
Yep, she came in and talked to Matthew about it. I was not here, I was gone that day. And Matthew explained it. Her meter had been estimated for a number of months previously, and I do believe there are a few extra weeks on there as well. I can certainly have Matthew look into it and explain it to you guys.
When was the last time we read the meter? Do we know?
It was a year ago.
It was a year ago?
Right around, wasn't it?
Last October.
Yeah.
And I did bring several readings in myself, whether they were used or not.
We can pull those slips and double check. We keep all the stubs, so we can double check that.
All right, we'll look into it, and hopefully we'll have some answers for you. All right, thank you, we're gonna move on then. Going to approve the agenda. Aaron, did you have anything to add?
No, Mayor.
Rob?
No, sir.
Pete?
Better.
Julie?
No.
No, Mr. Mayor.
Mark? Okay, and Jenny, did you have anything to add?
I don't.
Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second. Julie's got it.
Okay, and motion, Rob and Julie. Is there any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Consent the agenda. Everybody get a chance to take a look at last meeting, claims for the month. There are no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Motion made by Rob.
Second.
Seconded by Mark. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed.
There we go.
There we go.
They just got turned off and they're back on.
Proceed the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. New business. Okay, Jim, is that, was that your first name?
Yes, Mayor, yes.
Okay, 2020 Census Presentation, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you very much, and thank you everybody for having me here tonight. I am Jim Mcursough, I'm a partnership specialist with the U.S. Census Bureau. I am based in St. Paul, and I met with Jennifer about a month ago. I do travel the southern half of the state, and I am engaging city leaders such as yourself and county leaders and township folks around the southern half of the state about the Our Community Partnership and Engagement Program, which is what I'm here to talk about tonight. Start off first here with a brief message from our regional director, Marilyn Sanders. She appreciates the opportunity for me to be here tonight, and wants to let you know that we are here representing the Chicago region, which is an eight-state region, Arkansas, Illinois, Indiana, Iowa, Michigan, Minnesota, Missouri, and Wisconsin. And when the city of Winthrop worked with us in 2010 for the 2010 census, you helped us with our B-counted sites and a couple of testing locations. You would have worked with us out of our own Kansas City region. The four states there that are contiguous along the Mississippi River are now part of the Chicago region. The Kansas City region is no longer. The Bureau consolidated from twelve regions down to six, so Minnesota is now part of the Chicago region. You may know that it is a constitutional mandate that everyone be counted every ten years. Folks that reside in all fifty states, Puerto Rico, Washington DC, and the island areas, and people of all ages, races, ethnic groups, and citizenship notwithstanding should, need to be counted next year in 2020. We've been doing the decennial census every year since 1790 because what is at stake is legislative representation through apportionment, as well as the distribution of at least $675 billion in federal funds to operate all types of programs that likely affect many, many of your citizens here, here in Winthrop. We have changed our design this year, the least not being that we are going to require or request everyone fill out their census forms online or by phone. Not every home will be mailed a paper questionnaire, but we did so because of there was many different outside influences. You've got renters that move much quicker than they used to, they're more mobile, they don't get landlines like they used to. We're operating in a constrained fiscal environment, much as you are asking, being asked to do more with less financially. More folks are inundated with more information and more technology types. You've got the ongoing distrust in government, declining response rates in surveys of all kinds around the world. We've seen that since about the 1970s, and you have many different types of living arrangements and diverse populations that we didn't see in previous decennials. So we needed to be a little more flexible in our design this year, and we did so by first establishing an awareness account, working with the county and the cities to put together an address database where the mailer I spoke of is going to be going out in March. We did that, we had some feedback back and forth with the counties with our local updating of census addresses. We started with address databases that the Postal Service gave us, plus address databases that we have from previous surveys. We put together a solid address database, and then we wanted to, through the complete count committees, which I'm here proposing to you tonight, and the information in the folders that you have there depict, a complete count committee is an awareness campaign amongst like-minded citizens here in town that will inform others of the need to participate, the importance of participating, that it's safe and the like. So we want to be able to motivate everybody through like-minded individuals, and then we're going to go around and count the population. We have a number of different operations that we count the population, the least not being our self-response phase where the mailer is going to go out, and we're going to ask people to go online, they're going to get a URL where they're going to plug into their computers, and then go to a secure site and actually answer their ten questions. Anyone that doesn't have a computer, there'll be options at libraries and the like. Also too, they can also use the phone and call in and talk to a live operator and get their ten questions answered. That's only one of our many operations. We have operations to count the homeless, we have operations to count group homes, students in dorms, and the like. So we have a number of different operations. And then one operation there is non-response follow-up. Those folks that don't respond by the end of April are very likely to have a census worker knocking on their door with a security device, asking them to answer their ten questions. We want to be able to then, beginning next September, tabulate the data and release the, so we can release the results. We have to get the information to the President by the end of the year, and to Congress by March 31st the following year. We re-engineered this year. This slide basically depicts that we're relying more on technology. We'd like to be able to hire locally here in Sibley County and in Winthrop, and anyone that works for us out here is going to have work from home, they're going to have computers and cell phones, and be able to do so technologically and through some of our increased productivity tools. There was a time where we had local census offices out here in this part of the state. We don't, you know, we're not going to have the brick and mortar, we're going to rely more on technology, and they're going to feed into our three-area census offices in the state, which are going to be in Duluth, Minneapolis, and Rochester. We do take cybersecurity very seriously, just to know that this is the first year we're going to be connect, collecting information on smart devices, but we've been collecting information on mainframes for many, many years. We've got in place federal partnerships and working with industry leaders, different, so we have a number of solutions and plans, and one is an incident response plan, and I want to stress that this is continually evolving. I just got some information today on some of the secure ways we're doing things. So it's going to be increasing as we get up closer to Census Day, which many of you know is April 1st. As I mentioned, we're looking to hire around the region. There are office jobs, there are field jobs, address listers and census takers are the ones that primarily what we're going to be hiring for, for our peak operations, which are going to begin in January of next year. And people that are interested, those that are interested in applying, simply need to go to 2020census.gov/jobs, and they would, they would fill out an application and answer a 33-question assessment, and go into an applicant pool. In the past, they had to sit for a three-part test, answer questions on map reading, geography, and English. They had to pass at a certain proficiency before they could go on to another couple of levels and spend about the better part of the day, but this is about a half hour for them going online. And again, we're looking to hire many thousands of people, and then, and then actually have a, have a recruiting pool that's much bigger than the thousands that we need to hire. These are some of the operations that I've referred to. Just to note there that April 1st is Census Day, that's the day when people fill out their form and make reference to where they lived or resided, and how many folks are living under their roof, and their living arrangements. It all refers back to Census Day. So if a form is filled out in May, or if it's filled out in March, you're going to reference April 1st. That's the day that we do count, that is codified into law. And then you'll see that we have to adhere to some of those other operation dates that I had talked to, the group quarters, the self-response, and then get the information to the President and to Congress. We do work as partnership specialists, myself, I'm on the government side, and we have a, we have tribal partnership specialists who work with all of the eleven federally recognized tribes here in the state. And as I mentioned, I, you know, I call on county and municipal governments like yourself and the state as well. We have community-based and faith-based partnership specialists. So we're looking to form these complete count committees in any, many different types of organizations, again, to make sure that everyone is counted, that Minnesota does get a complete count. And forming a complete count committee is as simple as a letter, Mayor, from you that goes to the regional director saying you're on board to form a complete count committee. We don't need a passage of an ordinance or a proclamation. And then you would point, you would appoint a liaison who would work with us, and then, and then build a complete count committee around that with some actively engaged citizens, maybe folks that were election judges or retired schoolteachers and the like. But you decide what you want the complete count committee to look like. We'll give you the framework, we'll provide the training, and then you guys, you guys can operate it as you see fit to make sure that all your residents are counted. Because the goal, again, is a timely, accurate, and a cost-effective count. Using those trusted voices as census ambassadors here in town, we provide the training and support. You marshal the resources, and then you understand your outreach efforts into your low-response-rate areas, and I'll be able to show you how you, how you can get that information. Individuals who can be included on a CCC include folks that are up here. These represent individuals and organizations where many of your citizens conduct their everyday lives, folks at the library, health department, hospitals and clinics, veterans' organizations, social services, schools, churches. Again, so all of these organizations can help get the word out that the census is coming and that it's important and it's to their benefit to, to fill out their forms. Social media will help, having a local member of the newspaper on staff. We would work with them as well to make sure that the message is going out, that it's reinforced and that it's localized here for your specific audiences here in, here in Winthrop. As I mentioned, we do reach, we do work with community organizations, as well as the Minnesota Council of Nonprofits. The Minnesota Council of Nonprofits is actually administering some grants to a lot of nonprofit organizations to make sure that everyone is counted around the state, so we do work very closely with them. The many surveys that we do year-round, and you may know that the Census Bureau conducts over a hundred surveys, not every year, but on a rotating basis, but based on those surveys that we do, we have this, we have an understanding that these demographics can be hard to count for their own unique reasons. Very often, children under five are missed, and it's very, it's very important that, you know, parents do know that their youngest children need to be counted. They may be living with mom or dad or grandma or grandpa, and someone may not know to, you know, to report on their smallest children, so children do need to be counted. College students are going to be counted when they're away at school, they're not going to be counted here in Winthrop. We do, like I mentioned, have the, have outreach for the homeless. We have outreach to 59 languages this year. The questionnaire is going to be in English and Spanish, and then the online version, and the, and the, and the web portal are going, or in the phone portal are going to be in 12 additional languages. Those living in poverty and the disabled can be hard to count, as well as seniors and veterans, perhaps in the past, they may have had some issues with dealing with the government, so a mailer comes from the government. But again, we have, we can show you how to pull up these demographics and just know that you, if they're, if they do occur here, you may want to do some individual and unique outreach to them. Snowbirds as well. Snowbirds need to know that before they leave, that they need to be counted here in Minnesota. So if they go online when they're down south, or if they wait till they're counted back here, they need to, need to note that Minnesota is their primary place of residence, and they'll know that if they're, we say if your head hits the pillow more than six months in a day, that that is your primary residence. So get that message out to your snowbirds. Right now, we're in our gear-up phase. We're going to engage everybody beginning in November, once we launch our national advertising campaign, educate everybody before the mailer goes out, encourage those when the mailer is actually out, beginning in March. Remind those who haven't responded, May through July, and then we're going to go around and thank everyone who's helped us in forming complete count committees, or commit, or committed other ways to get the word out. Some of those tools that I had talked about, about determining non-response, one is our mail participation rate map. You can see here that in 2010, Minnesota was second in the nation with 81%. The other 19% were counted, we're confident were counted through our other operations. But each little square here on this map depicts a county, and you'll see the colors, the colors differ based on mail response rate here. And I can actually drill down to the city level, I can drill down to the census tract level. You'll see that Winthrop from 2010, from 2000 to 2010, witnessed a 5% decrease in mail participation. So that's a trend you'd like to reverse. That's, again, the, the other 21% were counted, we're confident were counted, but this year it's much more important because it's online, and folks are going to have to, you know, undertake a new endeavor to be counted. So that's a trend that you would like to reverse. And I can, and this, using this tool is going to be demonstrated in the training as well. We also have our Response Outreach Area Mapper, and this, this tool depicts information by census tract. You'll see the blue line there, so as I, as I hover over that, that census tract, I get all the demographic data for that census tract. So you'll see median age, population, you'll see persons above or below the poverty level, and as, and as you use the slider bar on the left there, you'll get all very rich treasure trove of demographic data. You'll get internet connectivity, number of homes that are occupied, unoccupied, language information, and the like. So here you see in that tract, you've got a 17%, almost 18% non-response on the American Community Survey. Has anyone here heard of the American Community Survey? Okay, so that's the old long form, but it's now a form that, it's now a survey, one of our surveys that we do every two years, and it goes to 138 homes. So if someone says, "I got that long census form," likely it's, it could be our American Community Survey, but, but researchers and industry leaders and business leaders rely on this data all the time, you know, to make a lot of different business decisions. So here you can use it perhaps to do some individual outreach to those demographics there. And again, this will all be, all be demonstrated during the training. So going forward, we would appreciate if you're interested in training, we had arranged for that, maybe we can, we can do it with another municipality. If not, we'd, I'd be happy to do it here and come train the complete count committee. It takes about three hours. We provide the materials. We're going to be doing so, again, throughout the fall, looking to wrap things up before December of this year. And we would appreciate some of the information that are, that are in your folders about jobs, if you could, if you could get the information out about jobs. Again, we do want to hire locally, and we hope that we can all work together as a team to make sure that everyone here in Minnesota is counted once and only once, and in the right place. We don't want to count someone twice, we don't want to miss them, so we can do that with some teamwork. Here are a number of different websites where we have a lot of our information. The one that's highlighted in the royal blue are the promotional materials, some of which are in your folders. You can download them as PDFs, you can print them out, you could order them through me, I could have some shipped to, shipped to you on some nice cardstock and bubble-wrapped and the like, but there's a lot of materials. We have census swag we're going to be offering to you for any events that you have, so give us, give us a heads up for an event. We'd love to be, be able to staff that event, as well as the complete count committee to create awareness, again, going forward. We're on all of the social media channels there, and that's my presentation.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
So anyone have any questions? When do you need to know whether or not we would be participating?
The sooner the better, Mayor, so the sooner the better. Because we've been, we've been going around the state since about 2018 doing this, so, but the sooner the better, we'd appreciate knowing. Maybe, you know, in a month or so if we could, but then I'd get you scheduled for training, and then we can, again, we can discuss all of the options that you have.
Okay.
So you mentioned jobs, and this, the committee you're talking about, that's a volunteer?
That's volunteer, yeah, that's volunteer.
The actual numerators would be the jobs.
Yeah, the actual numerators, yeah, right. So we just, we just had, we just had census workers in the field doing address canvassing, verifying that address database. We're going to be hiring clerks and IT folks for maybe, for 40-hour-a-week jobs in Rochester and Minneapolis at the area census centers, but the part-time jobs that we're hiring for is about 20 hours a week, they're going to work from home, and it's operation-specific. But, but then if there's another operation, they can, and if they're interested in staying on, they can, they can train up and move, move on to another operation. And we do pay for training, too, so, yeah. We're encouraging everyone to apply now. Our peak operations are going to begin in January, so it's kind of a long process. Once you, once you get, fill out your application and your assessment, and to get into the pool, and then once you pass that, then you'll be notified if you're interested about the job, and then we start the process of the fingerprinting and the background check. So everyone needs to go through that in order, in order to, you know, administer the oath, because again, you know, any information that, that anyone sees as a census worker, they are sworn to life to keep it, keep it to themselves, so. Under penalty of five years in prison or a quarter of a million dollars, so.
The part-time jobs, they're not GS, are they WGs?
No, I, it's a good question. I think there might be four or five GS, I think, yeah.
Because people don't want to know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, there's no other questions?
So I should follow up with Jenny?
Yes.
Okay, good. Well, thank you very much, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. G4 is not bad for a part-time job.
Tried to not do that, Nigel.
Yeah.
Five should be right around that sixty. Double check, but I think that's what the...
All right, very well.
What, a GS?
Listen.
A little bit less. Because the GS5 is eighteen and a quarter. Yeah, thirty-something a year. Yeah, it's eighteen and a quarter an hour or so.
Okay.
I think they're, I think they're 16 an hour here.
It's a mistake.
Yeah, but it's all up on the website, so if someone goes to the website, they'll see that, they'll see the hourly rate and the like, it's all, it's all there.
That's what people are going to want to know.
Yeah, no, it's...
And for how long is it, just until you're done doing it?
It's for the length of the operation, so they'll know, Mayor, that the operation is going to run eight months, or six months, whatever, yeah. So, you know, weekly paycheck, paid training, so it's, it's a good deal, you know, for, you know, making a little money on the side.
Somebody who's retired.
Someone who's retired.
Works third shift and go on it.
Right.
I just came for the government, no more, no more. I get the same for issue.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Listen, did you, we've got this copier replacement proposal?
Yes, so our contract with Metro Sales renews in December, and where we're at right now...
Metro.
Metro Sales, yep. So when we purchased this copier that we currently have back in 2012, our old one went into the police department. Ours now, we're having more and more issues and repairs that need to be made because we use it quite a bit. It's, you know, seven years old, and some of that stuff that they're repairing, they don't cover anymore. So we purchased that copier outright for $8,000. Metro Sales, I think Jenny included the proposal that they had given.
Yep, it's in the pack up.
Yep.
So for both devices, it would be a, we wouldn't own the machine, we would just lease the machine.
That's the best way to do it.
And it would come out for both of them at $2,084 a month, which is $2,530 a year. And with this, we would receive a rebate for $750 straight from Sharp, and we could apply that rate to our lease, which would cover three and a half months roughly. The issue is that the Metro will not cover the police department copy machine anymore. We're still being charged for it.
Right.
So, and they don't cover staples.
No.
If we have to buy more staples, we have to pay for those, it's about $110 roughly for staples for that. With the Marco one, they provide everything, supply, except for paper.
Except paper, yeah.
With the supplies, maintenance, repair. They will come and fix it, and then they will swap that machine out as it ages. Where we're sitting at now, this machine we have, if something happens to it, we would have to buy a whole new machine.
How long do we have this machine?
Seven years.
Since, yeah.
We, we had issues years ago out of Guidecraft, and we went with this type of deal about six years ago, working with Metro as well, and to where we're leasing the machine. We tell them how many copies we're doing, that's where they set your price at.
Yep.
And just, it's been a godsend, you don't have to worry about your copier anymore.
Well, Metro...
It's done, it's taken care of.
Because they are overcharging us, Metro, who we have now.
Okay.
Per, they're charging us for so many copies.
Yeah.
And if we don't use, even if we don't utilize that...
Yeah.
We still pay that. And with Marco, they will, when they meter it, if we're using less than that...
Oh, cool.
They will adjust our price.
Nice, okay.
So that we're not...
Hold on.
Interrupt you, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Will they give you a discount rate if you use it as the mass printer? Do you get a cheaper rate on the printing for, as printer? In the Army, we did the same thing. We contracted, and we got one price for copy, and we got one price for using it as a printer.
I think it just goes by the meter.
It is all, only by the meter.
Some will do it, some will do it both ways.
Yeah, it's just all metered as one.
Yeah.
But then he listed out, like, just for reference, you know, what, based off of what we're using now, kind of what, you know, they would kind of charge us for. And it also, this one is a color copier. Instead of, because Jenny's the only one that has a color printer, so if you need to print something, like when we had that business blitz and I had to make those packets, I have to use hers to make all those copies, which is sort of an inconvenience for her, but also utilizing all that ink, you know what I mean? So it would just be handier. And then the police department would have one that functions, because I don't even know if that thing even works. It's from 2004.
It works one.
It's very old.
Does it, do you need your own copier?
We don't need it, no, we, we just, I just asked...
I meant for security-wise, you know, you know.
Scanning stuff and, because this, you'd be able to scan and fax, you know, your solos.
Right now, we use, I use the upfront copier a lot for PDFs, because it'll just, it'll make stuff into PDFs, and then we shred the original.
Exactly.
Let's see, this one would too for you.
So, so no, we don't need the copier.
I'm just, I'm just saying, when you had, started a problem with the next machine down the road, do we need to, you know, or could we just migrate over now?
Well, this, the one we have now, if we moved it into the police department, who would make, we wouldn't have a maintenance contract, so it would just be...
Okay, and, because I'm assuming nobody's going to want to buy it.
Is there any trade-in on either one of those?
No, they would just remove it. No, they would just remove it. It's so old that it doesn't have name.
How many copies do we usually go through in a month?
Well...
So, it's thirty-six thousand a year on one of the city office.
Yeah. No, I think it's a great idea.
The whole, you lease everything deal is much better.
Obsolete. They bring in a machine.
Yeah, yep. Yeah, we've been very happy.
You set it up as the full multi-function, where it's the copier, the fax, the... It's another way to do it.
Lot easier to budget with, too.
Is it networkable?
Yes.
Yeah. Then, could we do away with the police copier, the second copier, and only have one copier up front? And then, that way, they could, if you wanted something printed, or, you know, a lot of copies, you can just send it through the network to this one, and as you walk up here, it's printed and ready.
We can, we could, we have a secure, I think with the copier in the back, is we have a secure fax line.
Okay.
Although, we don't fax very much. I mean, most people accept emails with PDFs.
You still got to have it.
That's just because all of our faxes used to come up front, and that's kind of a security issue. Sometimes we would get stuff that was confidential that would pop up front for anyone to read, but...
Right.
To be honest, we don't use the fax a lot, though.
Well, even if we did, still, even a fax machine is, are they even available? I haven't seen one in forever. Even if so, I mean, they're relatively cheap, that you could buy, and it could sit there if we had to have it for anything incoming, or even remotely outgoing. And, that would be a few hundred bucks, once.
If we didn't go with the police copier, I'm sure that would change our monthly price, you know, obviously, to some significance.
But, that's only if, you know, we're not trying to take it away. If you need it...
No, it's...
But, if we don't, and it's not a burden to be able to, and it's networkable, if you wanted to push something up here, even if you put it on a thumb drive and came up and did it that way as well.
Well, it's got a USB on it.
Yeah, I know the ones we have at Guidecraft are, so, yeah.
Yeah, I say go for it.
Has Alexa. No, no Alexa.
When did, when does our contract run out with Metro? The end of the year?
Remember, they'll renew it.
So, you have to give them a notice?
It's usually the beginning of December. And, we've been paying about $1,263 a year for both of the machines.
So, that would come off, so we're already budgeting a thousand for that machine.
Yes.
So, actually...
I don't remember now.
The additional amount behalf of that.
Four months of function machine.
Sure, yeah, and we have that in the money market.
Yeah.
But, that first three and a half months, we wouldn't have to pay for, because that would be able to cover it.
The only way to do it.
All right, so it sounds like there's some interest in it, though. Entertaining a motion. Motion made by Dale to go ahead and approve the new contract?
Second.
Seconded by Julie. Is there any, yes.
Did you want me to have them remove that second machine, or did you want to just...
Do we have to pay anything for it as it sits?
Well, I mean, you're talking the police, Karen, the police.
If we don't have to pay for it, let them use it till it breaks, and then get them a fax machine.
You're talking about a new one?
Yes.
Two proposals for two.
Proposals for two.
Because I can usually talk to no one.
The motion is for one.
For one.
We don't need a new one. We don't use it enough. But, if there was an old one that, like you said, we're not making decisions on it anyways, just, we'll use it.
Yeah, 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 you keep it. Keep the one you...
And, when it fails, we'll just get you a fax machine to cover your secure network.
Okay.
So, we really don't know how much it's going to be per month, and do...
Well, it's less than two-ten.
Less than the two.
Not exceed.
Right, there you go.
Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Their bid just went to two oh nine for one machine.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. If they do something silly like that, then I think...
Okay, looking at county-state aid, Highway 32 cooperative agreement, that's, everybody get a chance to take a look at that?
Where's thirty-two?
Well, Jenny, why don't you just...
It hasn't been in First Street. This is the agreement that's...
Same stuff, anyway.
We need, no, this is the agreement we need to pass for the 2020 street project, to share the cost with the county and the state, because the state needs to approve the plans, and then the county needs to approve the plans, and then we need to approve the plans, so. In order to move forward with the project, we need to adopt this agreement and get it to the county, so that we can keep moving forward.
So moved.
Motion made by Dale?
Oh, wow, no second.
No second.
Seconded by Rob. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion?
Anything in there you saw that was out of ordinary? I didn't see anything that, but I don't...
It seemed pretty standard to me, so there was...
They just have to have something in agreement to proceed.
This is the same agreement they use with each town, that they do projects in.
That's, okay, all right.
But, the one thing I do want to mention is that we did talk about moving county-state aid highway from First Street to Second Street.
Yeah.
But, Tim is in the process of getting permission from the state to do that.
Okay.
So, that map on the, at the very back, where is that?
First Street, that bound by the county.
I don't know, there's a map in there somewhere.
Second is which one?
With the, moving it from First Street, yeah, because the problem is with the, with First Street, is that DFA has those silos there.
Yes, yes.
And, it's going to be so hard to get any work done to their specifications, I think is kind of what he said.
To the county's specifications.
The counties, yes. Mm-hmm. And, they're very concerned about those silos tipping.
They're worried about that.
Gee, we weren't concerned at all when we were looking at the sewer project, were we?
Right. So, anyway, that's something that we talked about. But, that's not what, I just included that, so you guys kind of had an idea that that might become.
We're going to need to know the ins and outs of that, with the pros and cons.
Yep, you'll have to approve it. I mean, they can't change it without your approval.
We got to look at what's, if we do that, what do we have to do to maintain that road when we do do that project down there for trucks?
Correct. Mm-hmm, correct.
All right, any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Data practices. Jenny?
This is, I talked, well, here, now I find the map. I talked to Erin about updating our data practices policy. Ours is from 2007, I think. So, he was kind enough to share Olivia's with me, and this is, that he worked on. And, this is our new updated policy. This would replace, we'd take it out of the city code, and it would be a city policy. And, if you want to elaborate on it anymore...
I can't really talk very well.
No, the floor is yours.
So, it's a pretty standard policy for when people come in and want data. You know, they have to fill out a form, and they have to, you know, we have to give them a time and an estimated cost, and I'll put it on our website once it's passed, and people can have the information there, so.
And it is based on a model policy as well, so. They're, the mummies.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's important.
He's an awesome guy.
All right, do we need a motion on this?
Yep.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by, ah, Julie, seconded by Mark. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Parking.
Oh, the school would like to, well, I shouldn't say the school. I should say Dave Selner approached me about amending some parking around the school to help ease with deliveries of, you know, trucks and the garbage pickup. The first one is along Rosewood Street, that back part of the school from that middle door that goes, well...
Yeah, the sidewalk to the back of the kitchen, yeah.
To the lunchroom.
Isn't that painted yellow already?
No, it's painted yellow to the north, but to the south is not. And then, and I've witnessed it, dropping my kids off, that sometimes there's a truck that's trying to back in there, and he can't get back in there, because there's cars there. But, Pete got a phone call today about it. Do you want to...
Well, that phone call that I got was basically, it's his decision, or Dave, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Yeah.
Who does park there? I think there's about, I looked at, there's about three cars that park there, and they usually belong to faculty.
Yeah.
I've never seen a school bus go through there in my life.
No, but semis do.
Yeah, they back, the milk truck backs in once a week, I think.
And, the other one is on...
The provision truck comes in once a week.
The other one is on Redwood Street, along the new gym there, and then across behind Al and Joanne Collins' place. I talked to Troy and Oscar about that this morning, and we weren't real sure about painting that yellow by Collins there, just because it's, they're requesting no parking from seven to five, Monday through Friday during the school year. And, we thought maybe a sign, put up a sign, but it's going to be really hard to ticket, I think, for the police, too, because it's so, you know, oh, you're driving around town, oh, is today Monday through Friday between seven and five, oh, I better write a ticket, you know. But, we thought maybe instead of painting it yellow, because it's only for a certain amount of time, we'd just put a sign up there, or, and I told Dave, I wasn't sure about those two spots, you know.
My other observation on this one, I really guess I know it, is they clean up the junk around there. I mean, it's just junk.
Behind the school, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They got all those, instead of by having to buy a dumpster, they get those hampers, and they go halfway down the street, you know.
But, anyway, I told them you guys needed to approve any, any of it, and so.
Discussion.
No parking anywhere.
Yeah, we're getting there.
Well, do they, they need our approval to put up the no parking seven to five kind of sign?
Yeah, because that's not on school property, you know. The park, the parking, no parking that's actually attached or adjacent to school property, you know, I didn't think you guys would have that big of a deal with, because it's their property. But, I was more concerned about, like, behind Al and Joanne Collins.
That, 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 that street we own.
The school can just stripe that yellow if they want to?
We would. We would paint it yellow.
But, it's their property?
If they're requesting it, yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
It's our street, though, so we have to approve it.
It's our street, though. It's not their street.
Well, it would, we would need a request from the school, not just from Dave Selner, wouldn't we?
He's a maintenance guy.
But, it's going to affect a lot of...
If you want a formal request from the school board, I suppose I could...
Yeah, make them make a...
Make a request, okay.
I mean, if you look around, there's just really not a whole lot of parking, and every time you take a spot away, there's...
There's not. There's not.
All right.
I will let him know that he, that you would like a request from the school board.
So, then, what if they request this parking? That's not on their property, so that's...
Well, they can request it.
They can request it. You can still do what you want, you know.
Yeah.
All right.
Push that on down.
Jenny?
Oh.
Your report.
See if I can find that. Okay, the camper can finally be disposed of. We talked about it this morning at staff meeting. Oscar's going to try to, try to haul it to the landfill. So, we'll see.
The landfill.
Mm-hmm. Melissa has talked to John Sanford with Belik about the ash borer. I know Julie had emailed me about that, too. And, we've talked about it in passing, yeah?
Don't, go ahead. I got, I thought of something. Somebody asked me.
Okay. He said it's treatable, that there's some way you can treat it. I don't know what that costs. I don't know what that entails. There is grant money out there to help replace trees, and I'm not sure if it includes taking them down. But, we don't have it in Sibley County yet, but we're like the last county in the state to not have it, so.
That's what made me ask about it, because I've read about cities that didn't have it in their budget, and they had to take down huge numbers of trees and try to replant, and, and the, they can treat the trees, but it's usually expensive.
And, isn't it, though, if you, isn't it spread by trans...
Beetles.
Transfer in the wood, too?
Yeah, that doesn't help, yeah.
Right, but they, once it, once it gets local, it travels, yeah.
So, anyway, we're aware of it. We're working on it, and, you know, doing what we can. We do have quite a few ash trees, I think.
A lot of the ash trees are boulevard trees.
Yeah.
After we talked about, I looked in the park, not so many in the park. It's pretty diversified in the park.
Oh, good. I think after the Dutch Elm debacle, is, then they planted ash trees, so.
Yeah, exactly.
So, anyway, we're working on it. There's two capacitors that went out at DFA. Troy and Oscar have been working with them, and with MMUA, and Quaddie's to, they're, they take sixteen weeks to order. They have to be specially made. But, everything seems to be going, getting resolved on that. Did you have something? Or, do you want to wait till they're all done?
You were, you were, just, just this thing from Dave Berg.
Oh, okay. Employee reviews are done. I did everyone but Chris. He's on probation. They all went well. Mayor signed off on him. Karen's employment contract expires this year. The police committee met. We, we'll get a contract together. Erin can look it over and for the next council meeting for approval. We met, yeah, with Tim Becker to discuss the county-state aid highway project. The Hocker annexation is complete. We're going to be closing on the lot at two oh three South Renville this month. I think Sharifa said she'd be in the 21st to pay for it. Cody Lovrude has submitted his plans for his new home at three oh three Spruce Circle, and Darren has reviewed and approved them, approved the zoning. He's going to start building in the spring. Music in the Park is complete for 2019, and they're going to do it again in 2020, so I'm waiting for them to get me the information. I submitted a letter of support for the game protectively for a grant. They applied to get some speed equipment. And, we have a budget work session on next Monday at six o'clock. Six o'clock.
This Kitty Corner calls from...
I spent...
Where's this house being built?
Off by Dale, yeah, next to the neighborhood park.
I was, that Honold thing that...
No, he hasn't got back to me.
He hasn't got back to me.
Is the cul-de-sac without him?
I, I remember them taking them.
Yep.
I'm getting a neighbor.
Yeah.
Kitty corner.
Do they know they're getting a neighbor?
Well, if he puts his driveway the right way, I'll blow it out for him with a snowblower. I'm a friendly neighbor.
Let's see, I spent thirty-two and a half hours on EDA stuff. I spent a lot of time in the Winthrop Market, amortization schedules, Red Rooster loan payoff, closing, et cetera. But, that is done, and I've heard a lot of great things about the store, so I hope it's all going well. We approved three loans for local businesses this month for backdoor hairstyling, Randy Pagan cough and Pimos. I'm working on finding an accountant. We actually have a pretty good lead on one right now, or on a couple, maybe, but one for sure, hopefully. I'm going to maybe show him some office space on Friday, so that's good. And, let's see, I put an informal poll on Facebook to see what kind of input we'd get, and, and we had 113 votes for a fitness center and 74 votes for a pet vet. Somebody, you, and I think Troy also brought up to me about a pet vet, that people would like a pet vet in town. I don't know what would be involved in that, but, you know, might be worth looking into.
Six years of college.
Eight.
Or just have somebody come a couple days a week.
Well, if you had somebody come a couple days a week.
Yeah, uh-huh, rent a building and whatever. I connected, I attended the Connecting Entrepreneurial Communities Conference, which was really good. We're looking at some of those speakers to maybe speak at the Winthrop Opportunities Banquet. And, I'll have some information ready for the budget work session, but I already gave you most of it, so, that's it.
I'll have you know, my neighbors are readily supplied with fish, vegetables, and sauerkraut. Thank you very much.
Unless you have anything for me?
No, that's, that's good. Okay, reports. City legal, was there anything more?
Nothing more.
Anything you want to talk about?
Couldn't tell you if it was.
Yeah. Troy, was there anything?
Water meters, probably around eighty-five percent done.
Awesome.
With the residential.
Awesome.
It's going really good. Has everybody seen, we had water main break last Saturday night?
Right after we got the highway fixed.
Yeah, I know. They concreted it today. They're coming...
I'm thinking them digging that little trench probably disrupted it, and it's that one hadn't made it.
Caused my surge, you think?
I don't know, it could be.
Did you get any sleep that weekend at all?
No.
I mean, there was a fire call, and there was the...
You got enough. You got enough.
It's overrated.
Yeah, what else? Well, electric meters, I think, were around fifty percent done with them.
Okay.
The deck was fairly quick, we just need some time.
Yeah, I will. No, that's a good idea.
I think that's.
Then people can check in.
For reports.
Alright.
Thank, good job with those two.
Nothing with street electric. Pete, did you have something, MFBA meeting?
Well, you, you should get the update, but have you got this little piece of paper?
I didn't give that to everybody, that I just, that was your.
Alright.
Because I talked to Dave this morning, and I talked to Dave Niles, and they're not ready to pass that yet.
Alright.
Till next month, and so I told Dave.
I will bring this to the meeting, though, so that, uh.
Yep.
Basically, what it is, is the MFBA is continuing to push development and buying land. They're, they want cities, if possible. You don't have to, but when, if they're going out to market the business for you, they wanna know what our rates are gonna be for businesses, and, uh.
Like an incentive rate?
Yeah.
To get a business here.
So, they gave us a bunch of legal jumble, like Aaron, like probably, and I didn't understand it, so I said to Jenny, send it up to Dave Berg and let him, and he, he, he asked some very good questions about.
Yes.
But it's not something we have to.
No, no.
It's just something to attract businesses.
Same as everybody else.
Okay, anything else be? Nothing for the fire? Okay, ambulance, um, did you have anything? Alright, uh, planning commission, uh, RS fiber report, Julie, do you want?
Um, there's a little page summary. We had a joint powers board meeting last week. They reported Jake Ricky is the, uh, new chair of the positive. Um, he said that RS fiber is back to normal operations, they're doing a marketing campaign. They are, they're consistently meeting their goal of twenty-five net new customers per month, so that means that, you know, they're, it's not just the new signups. That accounts for the people who move and drop their service, or the people who hop around, so there's twenty-five net, um, new customers. As of September first, they were at twenty-three hundred total subscribers, and, um, they are ahead of their financial target of five point five percent growth, so it was a good, it was a really good report. They're also trying to do a gra, a kind of a grassroots thing. It sort of reminded me of the, uh, census, um, you know, community-based thing, but the best thing they feel for, um, you know, local growth is local support, so they would like people who are interested in the project and would like to just, you know, talk a little bit more about how to get the word out to their friends and neighbors, and just to say that it's, you know, a good service, and you may wanna look into it. So if anybody's interested, let me know, or if you know Jake Ricky, you can contact him directly.
Have they ever talked?
Go ahead.
Have they ever talked about people who are currently on, like, MediaCom and wanna switch to RS fiber? But because they have a contract with MediaCom and the penalties that are involved, um, have they ever talked about some kind of a program that they could, you know, say, well, we're, we're gonna, you know, take it off your bill for the next three or four months, you know, to get you to switch?
Yeah.
To RS fiber?
I, I don't know. It might be worth a phone call to Jake Ricky or somebody to, you know, let him know.
Cause a lot of people are tied up in a.
Yeah.
Two-year contract and.
Yeah.
The Dish people and that, they'll buy you out. They'll pay the buyout. You go from, uh, direct to Dish, they'll pay the three or four hundred dollar buyout.
But now Dish is fighting with Fox, so.
Right, right. Sling was, too, so.
Yeah, but that's done, yeah.
So they have their own issues.
That's kinda the selling point right now, cause I think they, right now, RS fiber's got all the, yes, they do, channels that everybody else is fighting with, so.
But they got that, they're done. They're done fighting in the back.
Okay. Cable commission report, you weren't at the meeting?
I wasn't at the meeting. They, they didn't, I don't even think they had a quorum, they just sat around and ate pizza for that night, so.
Alright, is there any further business?
Yeah. There is a tree down in front of Randy's owner's house. I think it belongs to the city. It's on the Boulevard, and it is hollow. You can stick a yardstick right through the trunk. Or make a drum out of it, whatever you choose. Uh, I think it should come down before it falls on somebody's house. It's a widow maker.
Did you hear that?
Somebody Randy's owners?
Yeah.
Are you aware of that tree, or?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
There's a couple around town.
Alex went down there before, and he's looked at it, and he said it wasn't that bad, so.[1757.12]